Based on what we feel is the right thing to do and for what is best for the entire city, not just a few. Thank you for keeping us safe and protecting each and every one of our citizens as we go about our daily lives. In your precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
First, our business is to approve the minutes from the last meeting. If everybody's had a chance to look those over, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion made by Glenn.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Likewise, for the approval of claims, if you have any chance to look those over, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve of claims.
Motion made by Glenn.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First item on the agenda was the, there's a petition put to vacate a right-of-way. OFS is filing for that, as I understand for that type of thing. And it'd be, since this is a public hearing this evening, I will call the public hearing to order. And then we will hear any comments, I guess, at that point. You may.
Good evening, councilmen. My name is Caroline Brinstar. It was a pleasure to meet you. I'm with Denton Spingham Greenbaum, an attorney in our Jasper, Indiana office. For tonight's, for your review and consideration, we're representing OFS Brands Holdings, Inc. And before you, we have our petition to vacate the dedicated and reserved public right-of-way as well as utility and drainage easements. We believe we've met all of the legal requirements, but I would like to direct your attention to tabs A, two, and three. I feel like these depictions that we've included here can give you a better bird's-eye view of the property that we're talking about. So, tab two just includes all the adjoining landowners, which, as you can see, five of those parcels in yellow are OFS. The purple one, towards the north, is the Southern Railroad Company. They have been given notice about this public hearing as well. We have not received any comment in response. And then, tab three is just a general depiction of where this vacated easement for the public right-of-way and the utility and drainage easements are right now. They affect all of OFS's five parcels right here. And we're asking for your consideration to approve our petition to vacate those easements in public right-of-way. Currently, for the public right-of-way, it's a, you know, reserved and dedicated road. It has not been developed. It's not being used as a road. As well as in terms of the utilities, there aren't utilities that lay in that easement except for what we would consider service lines to the OFS building that currently exists for gas and electric, I believe. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have or any of the members of public at large.
I believe the original easement right-of-way was, was dedicated because there was some anticipation by a prior owner of developing that land into commercial or industrial lots. But subsequent to that, OFS has acquired all of the properties surrounding both sides of that dedication.
Hey. You're saying there's currently, there is no utilities in the easement aside from service lines directly to OFS?
Correct.
No one else's service line is in those either?
Correct, sir. We had Cash Wagner go out there to conduct the surveys to locate those utilities. And from what we've gathered from, based on their survey, as well as reaching out to the different departments for the utilities here for the city of Huntingburg, they have recommended that what was there, what they located, was just service lines only to service the OFS building that currently exists.
I think also, I think Paul's checked into it as well. John's checked into it, and there's nothing there that we need to be concerned with.
That was just my own, I just want to make sure that I heard you clearly on that.
Yeah. Thank you.
That would be my only concern, if we had something existing in there.
Correct.
How would we get to it or whatever, maintain it, so.
So, that line, you're saying that a road though, I think you said, if it runs up to the railroad?
Correct.
And there's no road on the other side, it would continue, there's no bridge, anything there?
That right-of-way dedication just stops, terminates at the Southern Right-of-Way, South Right-of-Way line.
I remember a year ago, the property to the Far West was for sale, and OFS purchased that. That's the reason we have this situation, as you said. So, I have no problem doing a wild easement, vacating.
So, any other comments from public? Our three, our three members? Is there any other questions for our student guests here this evening?
I have nothing.
With that, with hearing, nothing else, I'll close the public hearing. And at that point, we will introduce the ordinance to vacate. So, I'll file a motion to introduce. What's the number?
Ordinance number?
Ordinance.
2023-24.
Make a motion to introduce.
Motion made by Steve to introduce.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Glenn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Want to wave to right?
You can suspend the rules considering the same meeting has been introduced, if you have unanimous consent of all four of you who are present.
Oh, make a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion made by Steve to suspend the rules.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Glenn.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jose. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's easy enough.
We'll call for Tom.
Great, thank you very much.
Jessley, Bams, McFerrin, Dubon.
Aye.
Where? Absent. Five I's, one S. Four I's, one S. Caroline, Bruster, is that your last?
Oh, it's Brinstar.
Br-
Brinstar. B-R-I-N-S-T-A-R.
Brinstar?
Brinstar.
Brinstar.
I thought you said it was Carter about to give.
Okay. I didn't know I was going to hear.
Sorry, it's not a name. I'm here.
It's not a D with N.
Okay, thank you.
It's a Tell City Pretzel name.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So, my future in-laws, they own Tell City Pretzel.
Ah. Oh, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you were there.
I have everyone except, or not. Not yet.
And you didn't bring a sampling of mine.
I should have, I have some in my office. I'm so sorry. Now means I have to come back.
Pass it to Tom for that. Next item on the agenda, as you see, there is consideration to override the mayor's veto of ordinance number 2023-20. If anyone wants to make a motion to retake a vote of some sort, we could certainly do that. If not, it's going to be as it was before.
Just as a way of reminder, in order to override a veto, it requires two-thirds of majority, and since two-thirds are here, it requires unanimous vote for overriding this meeting. And by law, it has to be, if you're going to consider an override, it has to be done at the first meeting following the veto, which is this meeting.
I'm assuming we could go through the motions, but there's not really a point to do so? So, if we just let it, let it go?
Let it go.
Force a vote and, okay. Same, same result.
Same result. It's not, it's not adopted.
So, the ordinance then would not be adopted, and we go back to the original ordinance, which says it forbids chickens in the city?
And I, in order to clarify things, I think maybe about a year ago, this council suspended the enforcement of that ordinance pending consideration of an ordinance to allow chickens. I think perhaps some, I think the code enforcement department may need some direction from council now as to enforcement of existing ordinance.
Yeah, I, well, I, my comment on that, Mayor and I spoke about that previously also. I understand that there was a local business that was selling chickens and telling people that it was now legal in Huntingburg when it wasn't. And so, I'm assuming that we have people, more people in town now that have chickens on their premises. But we're not talking about bags of trash. We're not talking about junk in the yard. We're talking about live animals that need to, I feel like we, we need to find a way to notify people, give them the proper amount of time to find a solution for them individually, what they're going to do with their chickens. And I haven't had a chance to, to really look around, but a couple of ideas was that there's probably somebody close to town, but outside of town, that has the legal right and maybe willingness to have chickens and that might extend an invitation for people to, to give up their chickens to someone or to a farm where they would have a humane way of transitioning out of town. Okay? Am I saying that right? I just don't want to see, I don't want to see a, a notice go to somebody who gives them 10 days to get rid of the chickens or have a fine, and they end up letting them loose or doing something that others might find offensive. So, I just think we need to, like Phil said, I think we need to give them some direction as to what we think they should do going forward.
Well, I think we, I think we discussed that, and obviously, we're not expecting to get rid of them tomorrow. You know, that type of thing. But by the same token, we can't just let it go on and on and on either, because they're going to just keep doing the same thing over and over again.
No, I agree with that.
I think we'll sit down with code enforcement and kind of sit down with them and see what their thoughts are on that situation. Obviously, you know, we didn't have them get the chickens. They were in violation to start with, so it's really not our responsibility to find a place for them to take the chickens. It's probably their responsibility to do that. But I have no problem in giving some time for them to do that, so.
Yeah. Well, may, maybe after this meeting, there might be enough people watching that, that-
Might what?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, so maybe somebody might step forward, and maybe I'm asking, or as a cam, I'm asking for, if there's anybody out there interested, let the city hall know, and, and we'll get the word out to those that receive those violation letters.
Sounds good.
Currently, they won't be receiving any until we give instructions to, so we need to talk to code enforcement and find out what they find is an equitable, a reasonable amount of time and some kind of a equitable solution to the, to the issue. We cannot be out of, out of violation for eternity, but you know, we need to, there should be a transition period.
Right.
You know, whether it's 90 days or 100, whatever, and we need to speak, we need to find on their behalf what, what they think is a reasonable amount of time to deal with this.
I'll handle that first thing tomorrow.
That'd be great.
Well, I'll quit with Paul, because now he's on vacation. All right. The only other thing that I have was the program events report, but you have that. It's just an FYI, so you can kind of see what things are going on, those, hotel hall and around the different places. I think you've probably heard also that we've been approved to have the red, white, and brown starting next year at League Stadium, which is a fantastic thing. It'll probably bring four or 5,000 people into that type of situation. So, we're kind of excited at the fact that they reached out to us. We didn't reach out to them. They were looking at it for a long-term situation if it works out for us.
Be a great event, be a great event.
Yeah. Other than that, John, you're up next.
Good evening, John.
Gas Department. New service in this month. Got two on file. When they're ready, we relocated one service. The crews installed 32 new census meters, the actual meters, and 15 smart points. That leaves a total 1742 out of 3830 we need to change over yet. We've probably got another 350 smart points we got to install before they're all be installed. And then, it's going to slow down quite a bit since we got to change the meter out. We changed the regulator out and the valve, so it usually takes a lot longer to do that. So, that's going to be an ongoing process for a while. And the crews did their annual leak survey. It's required every year. Fourth of the service plus all the business districts. Did include a picture of what the mobile looks like. I don't know if you guys have seen that before. But they outfitted it with the sniffers on the front. And so, they go over the mains, and then they go to the houses, service lines. Didn't find no major leaks. Always did found some very small leaks. It just took a tightening of the meter nut or a twist of the pipe, just barely, because over time, it settles a little bit, and it's just a very, it's not even reportable. But we follow up, the other crew follows up and gets all that fixed. We fill out a report, put it on file. And when we get audited, the auditors go over that report. So, having somebody else do it, we're saving probably $7,000, $8,000, $9,000. We started eight years ago. So, just finishing up on that. So, then, we're going to start on the meters. Now, did, we did receive our yearly check, I think, Tom? Is that right?
Yeah.
From PIFIA. I did put the amount there. I did include the total amount, we usually save in a year's time to the natural gas customers. It comes out to 98, 164, 50 roughly. This is our fourth year. When we went over to Illinois back in 2019, we signed up for, it's a 30-year program. We signed, signed up for five to seven years to where you can opt out. The seven years, it will be up in September of '26. So, the program is working well. As you can see, what kickback we're getting, that goes back into the natural gas customers, which they'll be saving. Yeah, you come next year, they're going to renegotiate for the next five to seven years, and it's kind of looking like the discount will be even a little more, but they don't know for sure yet, but we'll find out next year. So, I think it's been working great. And then, natural gas customers, which is good news, expect the natural gas prices to be down roughly 25% under what they paid last year. Under normal conditions, if they persist, you know, if there's a major pipeline disruption, a compressor station go down, a deep or long cold spell, that's going to impact the cost. But that's a good thing for the customers. And I did, the United States does liquefy natural gas down in the Texas, the Houston area. Just for informational, I kind of made a picture of what one of them cargo ships looks like. That holds quite a bit of natural gas. They take the, the gas and they liquefy it, put it on these cargo ships, they send it over to European, Asian nations or countries. So, that's a big ship.
Lots of domes on it.
Huh?
Bunch of domes.
At least that's the tanks, huh?
Yeah, I guess that's what it looks like, big old domes of some sort.
It, usually them things hold, I think roughly 10 billion cubic feet of gas when they send it overseas. It's quite, it takes, I think they said like a day to fill one of them up. Takes two weeks to ship it over. Takes usually 24 to 36 hours to unload it overseas. It's quite a, quite a lot of gas.
Yeah.
Any questions on the gas?
Well, John, the chart on there that showed the August of last year at 8:54 and this year at 4:94, that's a 10% gas price that's come down that much?
Yeah. As you can see in the chart, the red is last year, and the brown is this year. As you can see, last year, it's up quite a bit.
I like this year much better.
Yeah. As I say, we project it to be 25% lower. If normal conditions persist. Any other questions on the gas? The electric side, crews, they replaced five total poles on Clay Street from the highway to Seventh Street, and then down Seventh Street, two spans. There's some new residential buildings going up, duplexes in that area. We didn't have no electric service right there, so we got to build two spans of new line, and we didn't want to hook it into the real old line because the poles were short, leaning over copper lines. So, we decided to redo the whole little span there, which consisted of five poles. And there is an empty lot right there that used to be used by, I think, DuBois Wood, the parking just east of the Eagles Club. So, for future development, we decided to run all new lines, new poles there, so when it does get developed, we'll be able to serve it pretty easy. Then I did clean up some trees, things underneath the power lines. I've seen some pictures. That is off Chestnut Street by the Stein Camp lumberyard.
DMI lane.
DMI lane. We had to clear all them trees out. We're going to replace some of the poles that are really needed. It took quite a little work to clear all that out. And then, Orange County, they got their make-ready poles done in the St. Henry area. They did reset 14 poles, so they've been invoiced for that. So, we got that done, so now we'll be running fiber in that area. Any questions on the electric?
Nope.
No, there's a lot. Do we still have a lot of copper line in the city?
Nope.
I'm going to say, that's unusual.
Over the years, when we replace the poles, and we usually try to replace the lines if it's copper.
Yes. It's brittle, isn't it brittle?
Or something that gets brittle over age.
It's very small, and it breaks easy.
Okay, I just thought that was unusual, that you talked about that.
Yeah. I take, when we get a chance, we take all the copper down, but ACSR, which is aluminum with steel strand in the middle.
Anything else for John?
Looks good. Thank you.
Hey, son. Jerry.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Start with distribution. The, we got a water main break at 414 South Walnut Street on 10-3. Blew out a fairly large section of the top of the water main, probably two foot in length and three inches across the top of that six-inch main. You guys were able to repair that with a stainless steel bang clamp. We finally got the fire hydrant in that we ordered during flushing season to repair the failed Darling Fire Hydrant at Fourth Avenue Walnut Street. The city kind of set a standard, I want to say maybe 10 years ago, definitely before my time, that we were going to go to all Mueller, Century Hydrants. They have the least amount of moving parts. Our pipe and sugar out here carries them in stock, and so it works well for the city. So, anytime these 70s and 80s model fire hydrants fail, we just pull them and replace them with new fire hydrants. We also found two fire hydrants that had leaking base gaskets around the bottom of them, so the guys had to go out and completely dismantle the fire hydrant, pull the whole body off the foot of the fire hydrant and repair those. And then, we had a, another service line at JGO at 205 Stellar Way that gave loose on us. So, we were out there one night and pulled a new poly service line in for that residence. And then, we had a service line at 106 North Arden Street that also is copper. That one, we haven't had a lot of issues over in that area, and so I feel that the issue that we've seen with copper has been mainly there in JGO. But, so as far as saying what caused that, it could have been rock that caused it, or you never know. So, and then, during all that, we've been working on that third section of East Second Street between Van Buren and Washington Street. That was completed as of Friday. The guys charged that water main over the weekend to let the concentrated chlorine disinfect the pipe. We flushed that pipe this morning, or yesterday morning. Took our bacteria samples to the lab yesterday, and we got a phone call the day that they passed. So, there's seven services there that stopped to be tied in. The pipe is actually pulled into the meter pit. We've just got to unhook the temporary main water line and hook those up to meter sets. So, should be very minimal time of disruption on service, and then we'll get that temporary water main out of there, and we'll sweep the street like we did the last two blocks. Justin Love's been very generous, letting us use his street sweeper that goes on the front of the skid loader to get that cleaned up for the residents. With that, the street department's been out there the last couple of days, and the intersection at Van Buren from the westmost point to Washington Street has base asphalt in it, and half that block does have surface asphalt on it as well. Once that block is done, they will move from Van Buren to Main Street. So, that'll wrap up that project for the year. Other than that, for distribution, we do have a project that you guys spoke about last council meeting. I didn't get it on here, but it's the water main on the south side of town, down East Sunset, to provide fire protection for that area. So, the material has been ordered for that section of line, and as soon as it gets delivered, we'll be out there working on that. So, the filter plant is running as it should, and then our metering system, we finally got our radios in that we borrowed from Jasper, so we were able to give them their radios back that they generously let us borrow, so we could complete our system last month. And I just spoke with Utility Supply today about the large meters that we do have ordered. We don't have all of our large meters ordered that we'll take to complete. The commercial side of the town, the large diameter water meters range from anywhere from $1,000 to $8,000 apiece. So, those will come in, in waves for funding. Other than that, we're still monitoring the system and letting the customers know when they have leaks. So, I do have one other item. It's kind of last minute. We just, we've been brainstorming for a while on how we can do better when we do work on projects out in the community. All of our larger projects that we do, the pipe companies deliver all the material on site. So, the pipe and the larger fittings are just what they are. They're not, they're, they're not any boxes. All the other things that we use come in cardboard boxes. If the cardboard boxes look the same way they were when they were dropped off, we can return them if there's extra material there. We never know what we're going to find in the ground, so there usually is all this extra material there. We've tried to truck the material back and forth on jobs, back and forth to the shop. We find that sometimes things get missed, and we're taking more trips back to the shop than necessary. So, with this last project that we did on Second Street, we had roughly about $1,300 of the material that we could have returned, but we ended up taking it, putting it in our inventory down at Third Street Lot in the building due to the boxes being wet from the weather. So, we, we've been doing some talking. Today, we came up with a possible solution. The safety department has a, it's a six-by-12 enclosed trailer that was bought in 2014 to put together a trailer to include road signage, barrels, and a few other safety things to use. I've only been here five years. We did use the trailer once for a few signs when we had that leak on Sixth and Washington, and you see it used much since then? So, we did speak in a superintendent meeting a few months back, and we decided that that trailer's not really necessary. The equipment that's in it would probably be used a little better dispersed through the departments that could use the bits and pieces of it that is there, just for the simple fact that all of our jobs are different. So, all of our safety equipment is tailored to the specific department. I got with Tom today, and he was able to get me the invoice from when they purchased that trailer in 2014, and the, the trailer was never put on anybody's- and the, uh, the trailer was never put on anybody's, uh, paperwork, correct, Tom?
It wasn't, it wasn't capitalized because of the value was.
It wasn't enough, and, and it was split between five departments.
Right.
Um, so, we contacted Cars today, that's the company that the trailer was bought from, to ask him what that trailer would be valued at, because there's no depreciation with the city. Uh, he gave us, told us that they depreciate trailers twenty percent in the first year and five percent every year after, uh, which brings the value to that trailer today to one thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, we then divided that by five, being split between gas, electric, water, street, and wastewater, which brings that, uh, to three hundred and forty-four dollars a department. Uh, since water is done, put their fifth into that, we, uh, took that three hundred and forty-four and times it by four departments, which came up to one thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Which, if this works, we would be able to purchase that trailer and pay out the departments at three hundred and forty-four dollars apiece. While I talked to Tom, or, sorry, yeah, Tom. While I was speaking to Tom about, he's, yeah, he suggested that, uh, I bring this to the council to let you guys kinda help make this decision on this.
Personally, I think it's a no-brainer. You can put your equipment in there and keep it dry and lock it up. That way you can return parts you don't use.
Right. That's, you know, it's, we, we've got things stretched out down in John's building, letting things dry out, and things never fully dry out, so our bolts that we use are always rusty, and we're sitting there cleaning those up so we can use them whenever we need them, and we don't, we don't just continuously stockpile stuff down there, we use it. Our next job, we'll pull what we've got, we keep X amount of material down there for our stock, just in case we have another COVID outbreak or something. So, if, we gotta have a lesson for that.
Are you asking for the council to approve that, is that what you're asking?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, just authorize the transfer and sale of, for those, for those amounts.
I entertain a motion. I'll make that motion. Motion made by Glenn. I'll second the motion. Seconded by Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, that's all I have?
Any other questions, Jerry? Go.
That's it. All right, thank you guys.
Phil?
I have nothing.
Thomas?
Well, this is the, uh, we had the budget, budget hearing last meeting, and this is the, uh, budget adoption meeting, so. Uh, nothing's changed from, from, uh, last two weeks, uh, and that, ordinance was, uh, two thousand twenty-three twenty-one. I guess just to summarize the, uh, we're thinking the, uh, tax rate is going to be, uh, ninety, uh, point nine-five-seven-six cents per hundred, uh, dollars of assessed value. The total budget is eleven thousand, or eleven million eight hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-two.
You might note that is the last rate in the last, correct?
That is less, would be nine point five percent less.
The tax levy?
At the tax rate.
The tax rate.
Tax levy did go up at its, uh, four percent maximum. But there's more people to, more at the assessed value to spread that over.
Correct.
So that would be an adoption, uh, approval for adoption.
So do we need a, uh, it's already been introduced, so it's already basically just a motion to adopt, right? Motion to adopt is all we need. The total budget was what, eleven? Eleven million eight hundred twenty-three thousand nine forty-two. What he said. Motion to adopt. Motion made by Steve.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a roll call on that, Tom?
Yeah. DuVon.
Aye.
Bams.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Kissely.
Aye.
Ware. Four eyes, one absent. And I got the, need your, uh, signature on it. And your, your vote and your signature.
Why are your voting signatures all down, is there anybody, if he has anything else to bring up before the council this evening? Anybody in the public have anything to bring up? Dan, nothing? The only thing I was, uh, the, the November meeting, we're actually, uh, Phil and I are both gonna be out of town, and so actually there really don't much point in having a meeting on November, the first meeting, so we're actually canceling the first meeting in November, so the only meeting in November we'll have would be November the twenty-eighth. So I don't think anybody's opposed to only having one meeting instead of two, so. So anyway, so we'll, we'll back that announcement, we'll put that in the newspaper so everybody knows about it, so. Any other items to be brought up? I think they're trick-or-treat hours, but I can't remember what they five to seven. I think we did that last time, it was five, five to eight on the thirty-first, yes. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to adjourn by Glenn. I'll second it. Seconded by Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, everybody.
No problem.